Jenny Davis.
Here, Craig Scott.
Here.
Ron Vaughn.
You're here.
Was here.
Just late.
He was here earlier.
Yeah, his computer's right there.
Brad Newbecker.
Here.
Mark Cerber.
Present.
Any additions or corrections? Item two, we got public comments. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item three, ARPA discussion. Tim, you want to lead?
I'll make a note.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to start? We'll basically just a quick review of what we have in front of us. And I told the chair before we started the meeting, Mary and I have devised a plan. We don't want to go beyond two hours. So like by one o'clock, we think we'll be exhausted by then if we get that far. So this isn't something that you need to make a decision on immediately anyway. So if they have more conversation after this, that's perfectly fine. Funds that we have under ARPA, as you know, we've earmarked already to replace revenue loss. And that's one of the categories that does a few things for us. Number one, it, I think, opens up the possibilities for funding to the board without having to necessarily match one of those other funding silos. And for me, what that does is really reduces the reporting criteria back to the federal government. In effect, I have a report that I'll have to make by April 30th. And after that, we're pretty much finished, other than the obvious accounting that we'll do over the next few years. So that, I believe, was a very positive thing to do. But I did want to mention what ARPA was supposed to do. In the statement that the federal government put out was that the purpose was to provide substantial infusion of resources to help reverse the negative impacts of the pandemic, address its economic fallout, and lay the foundation for a strong and equitable recovery. So that's the foundation that the act was built upon. When you read into that, there's an awful lot in there, in the intent of the act that just simply doesn't apply here because we're not an urban area. When we're, if we were in Detroit or Grand Rapids or a larger city where there are an awful lot of problems that concern, you know, that come with low income and other aspects of the social makeup of the community. And we just don't face those here. We don't see the, you know, the widespread life, but the, just the areas that would need to actually be rebuilt from the ground up. We just don't have those. But that doesn't mean we don't have projects that shouldn't be considered. Now, just to quickly review the list that you see at the very top, the previous commitments that we've already made. I was talking with Commissioner Newbecker just ahead of the meeting. Just want to make sure that we have an understanding of what that component means. The lost revenue replacement for fiscal year '21 and '22 has already been budgeted or accounted for in a prior year. So those monies are in fact gone. On the bottom, the day treatment facility and the internal control audit projects, those monies too are gone. They're spent. But fiscal year '23 and '24 revenue replacement, while earmarked here, is not yet officially formally committed. We've talked about it, and we've talked about the reasons why we want to do that. But in the terms of this conversation that we have here moving forward, if you as a board decide, well, we don't really want to do that, those monies are available to allocate in other areas. Now, I don't advocate for that, obviously, but that's a possibility. So just keeping that in mind, so we all have that foundation to work from. The rest of the projects, none of them obviously have been funded. But some of the projects that we have listed here are eligible for funding from other sources. Just a quick review, there is a suggestion in here about recycling. I don't think we've put any cost to that. See if I can find it really quick. Well, wherever it is, whether there's funding tied to it or not, we did receive All right, so I know. This is a good case study for us just to think about in terms of how all these were, particularly with recycling. We don't know if we're going to get into a recycling program, what that would even look like. So the thought of putting this in, this list, was the idea of at least putting together a program that says, if we're going to do recycling, this is what it'll look like. But putting together that program is going to cost money by itself. So you recall back, I think it was late last year, we were invited to participate with Aranac County in a material management grant through the DNR. We did receive that grant. And frankly, that doesn't need ARPA funding anymore. And now it's not up to me to just remove it from the list, but keep that in mind. That, that project is now accounted for. And so really, unless you want to set aside money to actually implement recycling, I think that can come off the list. A couple of other things, we are going to, as you saw in one of the recent updates, sometime around May, we'll start seeing dollars for the opioid settlement. We have in the list here, funding for sting, for instance. And the opioid settlement money in the preliminary documents that I've seen, funding for sting would be absolutely appropriate to help control opioids. We did receive, or you will see in future meetings here coming up, probably the next two or three, presentations from addiction treatment programs that would like also to participate in some of that opioid settlement money. So if there are any other projects like that on the list, keep in mind, there's another source of funding for that, probably using ARPA. Unless you really want to go in big time with both feet on a project like that, maybe use some of those other monies instead. Last item to point out, there is a project in here to bring broadband out to transit. Recall from the audit presentation yesterday, transit's got quite a bit of a fund balance, well north of a million dollars. If they need the broadband brought to them, maybe that's a better source of funding to do that and keep the ARPA dollars for other projects.
Which is also going to be broadband money coming down the pike as well.
Exactly. In fact, there's already a separate silo for broadband money. And I mentioned this the other day at the MSU meeting as well, that probably that would be a better avenue than, than using the ARPA. But then again, I mean, there are some townships that said, and they were adamant, we really need to bring this in. We really need to make it a priority. Fine, but, you know, but just know that that other source is out there and that if we had other priorities, that maybe we go from trying to get funding from that source instead. Now, the goal today is to generate a list of priority projects for more focused consideration. I went back and forth thinking about, well, let's just go through the list and cross things off the list that you don't want to see. Well, frankly, that's going to take care of itself. Let's explain the exercise. If there's a project you don't feel needs to be funded, you don't give it a priority. You don't list it. And those projects then will naturally fall off the list by themselves. But what we do want to do, once the commission is comfortable with a list, then we will bring a formal resolution to a commission meeting that will identify what these projects are. But I want you to know that right now, the costs that you see here, by and large, are estimates only. These aren't the result of quotes in most cases. One exception being the annex building repair, that's actually a quote, but that's a quote that's a year old now. So it's probably a little bit low. Once the priorities are established, then we will determine which projects we really want to get a more firm number on. And obviously, we're going to need that before we make a final commitment. Understand that getting estimates for some of these projects might cost money by itself. We have a building project, for instance, that we want to do, we're going to need engineering and architectural services to know what the building cost will be. So there may be, you know, a multi-phase approach if one of those projects ends up on the list. Another point I want to make, we do have a number of other organizations in the community that are looking at using ARPA monies and using or getting into the entire relief program. One of those, EDC, for instance, is working on a childcare program to help meet some of the childcare needs in the community. Just keep in mind, it's a possibility, if you want to do that, that you reserve some monies for projects like that. Again, we have a couple of years yet to make sure that they're committed dollars. So if there are things like that, that you think maybe will come down the pike in the future that we just don't know about yet, might be worth setting aside some monies for those projects. Now, on the list, on the very last item on the list this morning, cost estimate came in for the Commission on Aging Generator. So that's been added. And there is a document that we put on the Google Drive that was the quote that was received from Commission on Aging. And quotes may be used loosely, it was an estimated one, but they felt was a good number to throw in there.
Was, did Mike, Mr.?
He's been talking, and I have not touched base with him, so I don't know what status on that is.
So, moving into the exercise component, the first question that I'll have for you, and I don't want you to answer it just yet, but are there other projects that you'd like to see on those lists that aren't? And I know a couple of you have come to my office, and we've sort of brainstormed some ideas. This will be the time to bring those out, and let's get them on the list. And we are going to ask you, and when it comes to time, we'll tell you about how we're going to organize your prioritizing your projects. But before we do that, and after we talk about other projects that you might want to include, there might be a project or two that you as an individual would like to advocate for. So I want to set aside time for that. You feel very strongly that we should do, I'll just stick to the annex building repairs, that we absolutely need to do that. This would be a chance for you to say, and convince your colleagues, this should be a top priority. Advocate for it. And maybe you sway somebody, maybe you don't. Maybe there are questions, we could get them answered, but opportunity to get on the soapbox and say, this really should be our top priority. All right? So there are, are there any other projects?
Let me ask about that annex building repair. How much is insurance going to cover?
Insurance cost a check for just over $15,000. That was it. And that was it. And all they were paying for, it was a very focused area that they were paying for. Don't remember exactly what it was, but it had to do just simply with like insulation and patching a spot in the, in the ceiling. And that was it. When Jack Morris went over there, he looked at that, shook his head and said, drop ceiling, for instance. If we're going to do this right, there's some issues with the way the insulation is in the entire, I call it the attic, but the upper section of that building, that need attention, not just the one area that the insurance company identified and understand why they did that. It said, the whole thing needs to be done, and if it's going to be done correctly, the entire drop ceiling needs to come out and a whole new grid put up in order to allow them to get access to all those areas that are up there. Now, there's the drop ceiling and above that, I didn't get up there, but they tell me is another, like a drywall, if you will, ceiling above that. And it's that area that was breached, and it's been breached in more than one place that really needs the attention. And then there's a whole nother set of insulation that goes up there. I don't pretend to understand that. It's completely out of my element, but I trust Jack. He was, I think, very meticulous when he did go up there to identify what needed to be done. He provided an estimate that itemized what those, in fact, I think that might have been the.
That roof on there is less than seven years old.
Yeah, the roof isn't the problem. It's what's under the roof.
It's what we have there. That was it. That was not a leaky, it was not leaking through the roof?
Well, what's happening is the water's finding its way. When the ice dam forms.
Right.
And it starts to melt from underneath, it finds a way, it snakes its way through and gets in. However, that's happening, you know, Jack was addressed that as well in his estimate. I'm just going to say, he knew where to plug the hole, wherever it was. The biggest problem, though, is the heat that's getting up underneath that roof and icing from below. And that's what's causing it to drip into 911 and those other offices that saw that.
But we got to get that fixed.
Um, so nothing has been fixed there at all?
Nothing's been done. Unfortunately, we haven't had a heavy snow load here, so we haven't even had the ice dam reform.
But we did get the check for 15,000.
Check for 15,000, did count.
I agree with you there, Craig.
Were there any other projects that you wanted to see?
Commissioner Vaughn.
Other?
Commissioner Decker.
Well, with regard to the annex building and the sheriff's department and some other infrastructure changes that we'd need to upgrade, looks like the courtrooms need to be redesigned and new construction. I think we've seen from just the building across the street that that can get pretty expensive for that.
There's always surprises.
So is anybody, would, would be entertained the thought of putting a courthouse slash sheriff's office next to the jail? And tear down the old one. And then we would have more room in the county building for, say, 911 or some of these other people that want to run from us up there. Also, I think it would be more secure for them up there. And then also, we wouldn't have to transport inmates over here for court every day. They would all be centralized over there. Just an idea, but.
Yeah, no, no, you've heard my ideas. I like to move the sheriff's department, the annex building, brought it up years ago and brought it up since. And it's a good building. 911 can stay there. We have structural issues with the, with the building that we got. I, I don't want to tear it down.
I'm not saying tear it down.
I know, I know. Well, I'm just saying, my opinion, I don't want to tear it down. I don't want to get.
Tear what down?
No.
What building are you talking about?
The existing sheriff's department.
You don't want to tear it down?
No, no, I think we need the storage. We need the storage right now. Maybe down the road, that gets tore down, but right now, we need the storage. And we may be able to use some small office area there for another department, but say like building, building zoning.
Well, I guess the reason I said is we already have a parking issue. And we could design that new building to have storage in it. And with regard to the generator that's over there in the annex building right now, that's going to have to be replaced at some point in the near, near future.
Is there a generator at the annex?
Yes, there is. We own it. 911 did not want.
No.
Big deal.
They, yeah, it was a big deal. They want, they want us to own it, so we own it.
If they.
And I don't, I don't think it's even close to a life span yet.
Okay, well, I guess what I'm saying is, what if we moved the generator over here? Would that be?
I don't think it's big, I don't think it's big enough. I don't know how big that one is, but I guarantee you this building is going to take probably the equivalent of what the Commission on Aging quote was for 50K. All right? And I don't know, like I said, that's probably 20, maybe 30K over there. You know, you could, if you did move it, you could probably just dedicate certain parts of this building, you know, like the server room, you know, you could prioritize and just have that on the circuit. I don't know how all that works, but I know you could probably, you know, let's say the, the ground floor and cut off, you know, the chorus, for example.
Why don't you tell me again what your, your thought was? Maybe I'm losing here. I, I, I was thinking you were adding on to the jail.
Well, across the street.
Across the street.
But this one, we would tear down, we could have a parking lot. And then the annex building, we would not need. We could sell it, or we could rent it out to other, other businesses, lease it, whatever.
And do what with?
Talking about.
Courts.
You're talking about having the court, the courts.
Courts and the sheriff's department.
Attached to the jail. That would free up the, that would free up the entire upper, the second floor in this building then.
Yeah.
So you could move MSU veterans and all that into the second floor. Is that your thought process?
Possibly 911, and I think that would be a more secure location for them, being inside the building and upstairs. And if we move the generator over here, then we would have backup power for, well, if we added a generator or, or made a bigger one.
Well, you've got a generator at the sheriff's office too.
Oh.
There's one there, and then there's one at the annex there. So there's two generators.
Yeah. Even if we had, just, just moved it over here and had it so that 911 and our security cameras and emergency equipment.
Keep the servers open.
Commissioner, Sir Rick.
I, I don't know what the cost, the cost, it's the heck of.
I know, I know, but at some point, we're.
It's going to have to hit, something's got, something's got to be done with that sheriff's office. And no ifs, ands, or buts about it. I mean, that building just from the outside is an eyesore. It really is.
It's terrible, that's.
You know, I.
And some of this stuff.
And I don't think you get any argument from anybody about that.
With all the improvements that I see on here, I think we're going to be spending a lot of money anyway.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And when are we going to have these types of funds to do these kind of infrastructure projects in the future?
And if I'm not mistaken.
That's the thing.
Doesn't the USDA have a grant program for new construction for, so maybe there's a possibility with USDA funds for new construction for what you're talking about? I think that's, I think that'd be a great idea myself.
I hadn't thought about the courts, but when I came into office, I don't know, three, four years ago, that's what I had walked over. And I agree with you, that sheriff's department is awful. Every, every aspect of it is awful. It's a dungeon, it's dirty, it's old, it's, it would be a terrible place to work in if you're there every day, all day. I then had went over to the jail and walked over there, and I didn't understand why the sheriff's office was not part of the new corrections facility, which I think that's where that needs to be. I didn't think of the courts being over there as well, but I definitely agree in that. I think that building does need to go, and I think that needs to be a parking lot over a period of time for employees. It kind of only makes sense for all of them to be under one umbrella versus two separate everything. We're paying for two separate electric maintenance, everything, parking lot. I, I do agree that that needs to happen. I didn't think about the courts. Are they?
And then possibly the annex building could also be used for storage as well.
My concern with that is splitting the clerk's office and courts, because if the courts come into our office with physical documentation, or we're giving, it would constantly, somebody would be walking across the street constantly.
Well, doesn't that happen with the jail already?
No. We go to the jail.
I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about jail personnel. I always see.
Oh, on court, well, on.
They come over with prisoners.
Yeah, in court days.
They transfer.
One department.
Transport.
People over here without prisoners too. I mean, I've seen them in your office plenty of times.
The other thing, the other thing I'm a huge advocate of is the childcare. I went to that, I went to that meeting with MSU the other night, and you know, that's, yeah. Did any of you guys attend either one of those meetings, any of you guys? Any?
No, I didn't. I, I was here in Mary's office.
I'm sorry.
That could be part of the plan as well over in that building is a satellite office for the clerk. Because you have someone who's dedicated to the courts in your office right now, right?
We have three plus me that are dedicated to court. And three out of, well, three out of the six, once we're, next month, we'll have three out of the six that are dedicated to court.
Well, I think I understand her issue. We've got higher security issues by having to transport prisoners across the road and then into the building and all through the building.
Yeah.
You got to kind of weigh out what's, what's more important, you know, what, what level of security.
Well, they might have documents in their hand, but it's also a county employee who we trust to do the job. And yeah, I would trust that over a possible danger situation.
The other thing I think we really need to consider is the childcare. That was a huge talking point at that meeting with Myers going in, with Mid-Michigan expanding, with McLaren that's continuing to expand. That is a significant reasoning that we're struggling so bad to get employees is there is no childcare available to anyone.
It is a huge issue.
It is, and they really, really stress that.
So in the morning meeting, they talked about a try something that they were doing, but it was a, an approach that they were going to investigate that was a cost share for this, where the families who need the childcare would pay a third of the cost, the employer would pay a third. I think there was some public resource and state money or something that would pay the other third to help alleviate some of that. I don't know how far down the road they are with.
Not very.
I know, talking to the prior director from there, it was right at the top of her last night.
It is a number one talking point, but it's not getting anywhere. And again, with, with Myers coming in, Mid-Michigan is making some huge expansions. Mr. Blaimer gives updates every month at the EDC, and that is the number one talking point.
The problem I see with that, the only problem I see with that is you're not building a structure, you're starting off a repetitive thing. I mean, and, and the county's not going to run a daycare center, right?
We're just, right, I don't believe so, but I don't know how to go.
We're going to be from a funding source.
But if we get more people to move to the area because there is childcare, I mean, Ray says that over and over again, when he's, when he's attempting to get new employees here, new providers here.
Right, I get that.
Where's the childcare?
I get it totally. I get the need totally. The thing is, is what I'm trying to say is, what's our part of it? Or funding source?
Right, I don't know. That's a good question.
Well, I mean, we'll, my point is, we'll be a funding source. We're not going to run it. It's not going to be a county run.
No, 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 yes, yes.
Okay, right?
No, funding, correct, whether we allocate.
We're just going to get a funding source for a year.
Or that's not what I was thinking. I would say allocate so much money.
Once, once we give our funding source to them, then what happens next year?
No, 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 that's not what I was.
That's my question.
I, that's a valid question, but mine was to allocate so many funds to get this up and running. And then the county asked, like, within our, we're, we're done with it.
Okay, okay, well, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Just to get them rolling.
That's what I'm saying.
There's profit there, definitely, with, with that. I mean, people are going to be charged, this isn't going to be a free service.
I mean, but if you run on that try county thing, like, or try, try what Tim was just talking about, then it depends on who's paying what, you know? The employer doesn't want to pay a whole lot to produce income, produce profits for somebody. Would this be, would this be run as a nonprofit type of a thing?
I would just like to allocate so many funds to it to have it up and running. I, I think that needs to be a priority.
Well, I think, well, I think one of, one of the things, and Mark and I talked about this a little bit in Tim's office last week. This is a one-time shot. We get a one-time shot at this money. We'd like to see something that 10 years from now, we can say, back in 2022, we made the decision to do this project. And it's lasted 10 years. It's something that, that's going to be here for a long time, rather than just buy something, yeah, that's going to work for a year, or even a vehicle that's going to work for three years or five years.
Well, I think that was part of that whole, that whole seminar the other night, agreed. And I think both these projects that we're discussing definitely fit underneath what you're, what you're saying.
Well, that's all, that's where I'm at. I mean, it sounds like a lot of money, but it's really not a lot of money. Because when you get into the construction end of it, you know, we saw that. You made the example across the street, that's a small building. Now, now we put a building up that, that encompasses different departments and everything else. We're going to go beyond this, we're going to probably to a loan bonding issue. You know, we're going to have payments for years.
Like Brad's point is, when you're looking at this, and you're looking at probate court redesign, referee courtroom construction.
I get it.
Annex building repairs, sheriff's office structure repairs, county building entrance repairs. I mean, that really is a valid, pardon me?
And if there's any grant that you can get out of that, that hurts.
Well, I'm not saying you can't do it. I'm just saying that you got to keep in mind, you know, new construction costs, it's going to cost a lot of money.
Any kind of construction.
Yeah, especially right now.
Yeah. Even some of that regardless, which you're still going to, the county building is still going to have to repair. If you get the sheriff's or the corrections, you're still going to have to repair. You can't let that go. The seal, the ceiling over there at the annex still has to be repaired.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't care.
Without a doubt. So you, you might as well take. You might as well take that annex building. If we can all agree that we gotta repair that, then.
Make it a priority.
Take a hundred and fifty thousand and take it right off the.
Well, we're doing priority right now, so we're making it a one there.
Next step.
Just tell me, Craig, it's all right.
I'll stick with Commissioner Scott. Okay, what else do we got? So that's the number one priority. We all agree on that?
Yes, remember that for the next step. It'll be important.
Okay, so we keep going down. What do you guys want to talk about next? Uh you gotta go to the information. Isn't informational technology all the stuff that Tom, Tom, geez, Tom put on there. I looked over all of that. Obviously, what he put on there is all gonna have to be repaired or updated. In the next two to three years by what he put on there. I mean, this is all stuff that.
And a laser perfect roadmap is still what the replacement cycle is. I, I think.
What are we budgeting toward that now?
Yeah.
Well, Tom, you're on there, right? You're on the zoom.
I am, yes. There's seventy thousand in network server and hardware. Um just in the general budget, but then we have the other departments for funding too. So like, with the jail, it would come probably from the sheriff's millage. The sheriff's department server and the jail server would come from their millage.
And now all of this stuff needs to be out there?
But that actually is a wish list. This is, this came related to that capital improvement plan that we did last year where we asked departments to give us a five-year.
Yeah.
Maybe it was ten-year, whatever it was, uh window. So what Tom did was meticulous. You go through there. When does the server need to be replaced? When will the server be obsolete? To give us a big picture over the next few years of what that would look like. In theory, having that roadmap, these are some of the first things that we make sure are funded in the general fund budget for each of those years. If you were to use ARPA, we would make sure that some money is reserved then out of the ARPA. It wouldn't necessarily come out of the general dollars. But like Tom just said, there are some other funding possibilities for this. Jail is a good example. It would come out of a millage, but it could certainly come out of commissary. Uh so there are other sources for some of these funds. Uh Tom didn't necessarily ask for this on ARPA. I just pulled them out of that um CIP plan so that we saw, these are commitments that we have moving forward. And if the board decides to go forward with a major moving the sheriff and the courts over there. Obviously, we're gonna rethink some of this because it's gonna be in a different location, maybe more used to it. Maybe it's not needed because it's over there. I don't know, but we'd have to take another look at this. It's the third server on the list there.
Yep. So I guess is there a reason to continue to discuss this if we're looking at what we just previously talked about?
That's up to you. I mean, the purpose of this is to get the ideas out. It exhausted that. I I do want to point out, and I think either somebody on to my left kind of alluded to it. If the board were to go with the the project to move the sheriff and the courts across the street. ARPA does not provide enough funding to do that. All right, so this will be, you know, obviously a good step, you know, toward paying that off, but you are looking at a multi-decade bond. Pay that, and that would come from the general fund to pay that. I mentioned a meeting or two ago about a bill that's been proposed in the legislature to help fund some of the unfunded liability for pensions for municipalities. If that were to come to pass, uh and. A large portion of that unfunded liability was gonna be paid for through that bill, that would free up significant dollars in the general fund. That we're allocating now, that could be dedicated to a bond. That's all speculative. We'd have to go through the motions of doing the arithmetic so you could see exactly what we would be talking about. But that's an if, that that legislation has not passed. It just was reported out of committee. I had a meeting yesterday with our county administrators group. We got an update on it. It does look very positive moving forward. State's actually using some of its ARPA dollars to address some of this. Uh so it's, it's there. It's a possibility. It's something to consider, I think, in the mix here. Another item that was brought up yesterday, just a full disclosure, and I don't think it's real. Uh but there was some speculation based on conversations in Congress because of monies now having to be redirected or rethought. Because of world events that are going on, that some of the ARPA money would be recalled. We don't think there's much truth to that. There's much traction. We couldn't track that down to a source. I only bring that up because half of this money isn't here yet. It's ready to get here. Right, so just, so we all understand that. I I don't believe there's a chance. That any politician in Washington would suggest the municipalities are gonna have to give that back. That's a lot of money. It would affect a lot of. About four thousand counties alone across the country, let alone the cities and villages and townships as well. So I don't think there's much chance of that. Uh short of some type of disaster that none of us has ever thought of.
Kind of in a disaster right now, but none of us ever thought of.
Well, new.
Uh we're not spending it. We're just discussing it right now.
Right, yeah. So there's, there's a lot of work we've got, a lot, but there'd be work that we have to do beyond today, making sure that you had some firm costs to work with, for instance. But right now, just where do you want the attention focused?
Okay, so we're gonna keep going? Informational technology? Any thoughts on that?
I think it should be a shared deal, you know, because we're, we're, we're gonna budget for these things already. We are just. The plant, the roadmap's already there.
Yep.
And it's in the capital improvement, so it could be a cost share kind of thing. We could use some money for it.
Okay. Keep going. So what do you guys want to make that a priority? What color? Yeah, pink, blue, and yellow.
Well, we're gonna get into the priorities. Let's just talk about the colors for just a second. Our thought was that each individual could write down what your top priorities were on one of these pads. The, I don't know what the color that is on top. Almost red, pink, okay.
It is pink.
I was gonna say fuchsia, but I didn't want to embarrass myself. That one would be your top priority. The center one there, the yellowish, greenish color would be your second priority project. Blue would be your third priority project. If there were projects on this list that you didn't think were worthy of any color, you just don't write them down. Our thought was that you would, as individuals, write those down. We would line them up, pink ones, greenish ones, blue ones. Just line them up, and that will tell us, you know, where those priorities fall. So if, for instance, the annex building. Uh repairs had five of those pink sheets, so we know that's a top priority. That's a pretty sure thing. Uh if the. If IT.
Are you looking at facility repair and maintenance being a subject, or you, do you want individual annex building home improvement RV park? Do you want them individualized?
Yeah, they'd be individually because this is just trying to group them just so we can organize them in our minds. So which ones are facilities, which ones are IT and right on down the line. Um did want to point out, um just another one really quick on the vehicles, the building department vehicles. Um this is gonna be a topic on the agenda next Thursday. Uh Brian will be here to talk about those vehicles. I. I'm gonna say to take it off, but we have funding in another source.
Right, I was gonna ask about that because there's, there's set aside funding for just the building department.
Right. Now, on the other hand, equalization planning and zoning, there is no other money outside of general fund. It's kind of my way of advocating for rent here, because I know what position they're in, but that vehicle that they did have, it's only good for the end of the hook right now, right?
Yeah, the new battery you put in, it's worth more money than the rest of it.
So do you want us to go through these now individually?
Yeah, what I.
Sorry, um could we like just change it to like a top priority, secondary priority, and then not interested?
I don't think you need to even write down the not interested. I think that's, if it's not on the list, it's. You know.
There's science to what we're doing, so not interested.
There's gonna be a lot of little sticky notes here. How about we?
Right, and then we'll, we'll be able to, you know, as they form, you know, the the sticky notes are put on the table here. Um we'll be able to take a look at those and, you know, modify, start to fine tune them. And then, you know, let's face it, I mean, you can do a little bit of horse trading too, if you make this project your top. Well, I think for yours too. I think we could keep discussing all this today and maybe take these with us and. Sit down at home or whatever and do all these and then come in. Hand them to your nice secretary and let her compile them and see where it comes out.
Or you could send this to us in an Excel spreadsheet and we could literally um. Read it.
Put it in a column.
One to fifty.
One to what?
One to whatever, one, one to fifty, whatever.
Well, what I'm looking at. Let's say, let's say your suggestion of the courts in the sheriff's office, the attached, the money's gone.
Yeah.
What, I mean, that's it.
Yeah.
You know.
Which, which qualifies most of this list.
So, yeah. What's, if, if, if that's gonna be a number one, what's the sense of even going any further?
I don't think that that's fair to throw. I mean, these other things were presented to us. I think they deserve discussion. I understand what you're saying. I do.
It's not like we don't want to. It's just that.
There's only so many dollars. If that's our, if that's gonna be our top priority, then then why even waste our time with. Continuing in the exercise because we know we can't fund it.
What I was looking at with the sheriff's department there is I didn't think it costs, and I know cost is up, this was four years ago, but it was just kind of like putting up, it's kind of a pole barn structure over there. It's, it's. Was just putting on kind of like a, it sounds bad, but like a lean-to for the sheriff's department over there, which wasn't, I didn't think would take it.
What you said, for vehicles, is that?
No, no.
Over the sheriff's department.
Oh, we talked with the Michigan Corrections.
Uh yeah, I went over there and I talked to Mr. Oger at the time as well and looked at the structure, and I didn't understand why the sheriff's department wasn't over there. Why do you have two separate buildings? In two different areas. So I didn't think it was going to be, I I didn't think about the courts, obviously, but how that structure is set up, I didn't think that would be a a significant cost. I mean, I didn't know how many offices, that kind of thing, but there's already like locker rooms and and I don't know what you're able, this is just ideas. Um there's already locker rooms and and facilities over there.
Right.
So.
Still have to add an armory and then which is gonna be.
Well, there was, and you know, we had Michigan Department of Corrections here. We had one set of stories from people that worked here. Previously, and then the Department of Corrections came here and told us a whole different story. Because we were told, I was told that no, you can't have the sheriff's department hooked onto the jail. And the Michigan people got here and I, I asked the man specifically, is there departments in this county that are hooked on to the jail? He says, absolutely most of them. I says, there's there new construction happening in this state. That they're hooking the sheriff's department, a new jail, and the sheriff's department on the same building. And he said, absolutely, there is. It's the preferred manner.
I think that that discussion was, could they fit in there with them at that time?
And that was the next question.
Couldn't do that, but we would have to add on to the.
Right, right. We talked about that, and 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 we came down to building on the front of that, on the north end of that building. Enough offices to fit, yeah. And then the Department of Corrections, the the biggest thing they said, you made sure that you've got a secure port between the two buildings, and he says, you already have it. So there was just no way, no, no way we couldn't do it. I mean, we have everything that we're, that they wanted us to have. We just needed extra rooms. Now, if we expand to the courts and stuff like that, then we're building the whole corner. You know, and I'm not.
Now, with.
I'm not saying no, you know, not at all.
With the.
We will take all the money.
Requests we got from the courts, are they, and and I know they had put like safety concerns for the pandemic, um for the redesigning and structuring. Are they back to, is, is every? Uh. Court back into session, or is there still courts where they can't do six feet?
I think they're all. No, I think, oh, we're all, we're normal.
Okay, so the request was if, if, if we have, if we have a massive pandemic again, and there has to be. Six, six feet as far as distance, but you guys also have the ability to do the televised now as well, correct?
Yeah.
If that comes to that. I have never, I take that back, but I've been upstairs. How how bad a shape are those rooms?
Well, in talking with Michael particularly about, I think it was the. Referee courtroom construction, but it's just the way it's configured right now. It just doesn't make efficient use of the space. He felt they could make better use of the space, whether there's COVID restrictions or not, uh through a redesign and I. Going from memory now, one of the courts is, you know, the judge is in the corner, and he thought, well, if that whole thing was moved. To a certain wall, you could have more room for your jury and more room for spectators. Uh but it it was more, while COVID was certainly a consideration, it was more just the way the room is structured right now could be used in a much more efficient way.
So this really isn't a priority. They provided us with this because we we requested it.
Right, uh and they understand that this isn't. In the context that we did this with the capital improvement plan.
Right.
This wasn't something that was imminent. It wasn't gonna happen next year. It might not even happen five years, but we wanted to capture it on the list, so we're always aware of it.
This is a remodel, not a repair.
Right. Yeah.
This is just a remodel, make something run a different banner.
In terms of my office with moving the courts over there, um. You'd, you'd have to split and go into central filing and move all the files and stuff over there, I think. Um and then the prosecutor's office probably would be affected as well.
But it might not be a bad idea with prosecutor's office over there too.
I was thought the other day too.
I always, I always wondered why it sat downstairs compared to upstairs. Other than there wasn't room for it, I guess. Did you go upstairs? It's not the same footprint as downstairs, you know?
Right.
It's kind of a miss.
When the building was originally, the prosecutor's office was upstairs.
Oh.
Prosecutor's office was, when you go down the hallway past District Court and where the drinking fountain is there. Make that little left, that's prosecutor's office was in that corner originally.
Cause was an MSU in this office down here?
Health, health department was, health department was down that way. Um I'm not sure what was in this hallway and stuff.
Are you thinking like friend of the court? They're down here, right?
Right.
Thinking them too?
Just an idea as far as.
Yeah.
Probation.
Well, they're, yeah, probation, parole, friend of the court, prosecutor's office, we would have to central filing, I. I'm gonna, you'd have to add a department and three or four new employees, I think.
So you'd be moving half to three quarters of the.
The building, yeah.
Saying we'd be better off bringing the jail over here.
I see your point about the security.
Well, I heard that idea.
It is.
I just.
When they built.
There's a lot more to it.
Idea was why not tear down the old sheriff's front building jail right there and then hook, what is that like, or right into the, right into the back of the county building? I, I thought that was. The problem is, is just like a lot of times, we already have these structures. Now we have to work around them. And this is a good conversation, you know, because. We need to. Bring ideas out on the table.
Absolutely.
Any kind of idea. I'm glad that we can. Bring out any idea there is. Now, how, how this gets reflected to the public after this meeting and all the stories that are gonna come out of it. Uh I don't know, and I really don't care, but.
Can we?
You should care.
I don't care about stories that are made up.
We have a need, um for sheriff's department. So I think a new, a new structure is gonna have to be warranted, no matter what we do. Uh and we've got to take care of this whole building at some point. Um if we just did sheriff's department and some storage um on, onto it, do that. So whatever you guys decide you're gonna do, but I think that it would be very important to get um the other elected officials involved. And also the sheriff, well, the sheriff's elected official, but the um, the courts, the judges should probably have a little time to think about it. And think, what is our best way forward here? All I know is we got a lot of money here that we want to do the best we can to um secure our capital expenditure. Expenditures in the near future and not just wasted on just funding some project that's only gonna last two or three years. And then the money's gone.
I agree. The only thing about going. A plan like you're saying, the, the whole step. I mean, you're probably. What, what it costs, it's eight million dollars to build the jail over there ten years ago. Build another half, the take the upstairs off and move it over there.
Be double that now.
Yeah, we'd probably be at twenty, twenty million dollars.
That was pretty complex.
Yeah, so.
It's gonna be pretty complex moving a lot of different offices, they're in courtrooms and everything else, just say ten million dollars. The idea.
Nothing, I don't, I don't know.
No, just to say.
I'm gonna go back to just.
Just to say ten million dollars, I mean. First of all, it has nothing about, it has nothing to do with who's in there or whatever, I'm just talking to the structure of the building itself, just to build the building. Nobody even sits in it, okay? The thing is, is can the budget for the next ten years sustain payments on that?
I was looking more like an add-on to the existing structure.
I, I agree.
Not a whole new, and again, when I, I don't remember who I went over that with, but it's just like a pole barn style building. I don't think an add-on for what I was thinking was going to be all of that much financially.
But you're only moving the sheriff's part, nothing else. Okay, yeah, that's, that's one idea. But to take Brad's idea and move more, more into it, you're gonna talk ten plus million dollars.
I, right, I agree with that.
Then I gotta ask the question, can we afford over the next ten, thirty years? Cause that's our bond payment now, it's thirty years on that jail. And we'll still have that payment to make. And that was at eight million dollars, I'll say we double the eight million, can we sustain our budget over the next? I don't think that, it, the way it's laid out now, no. Can we generate a mill to pay for that? Pretty slim, and then they're gonna, you know, they're gonna ask, why are you moving it, you know? Um, so I. As much as I like the idea, I don't know that it's feasible to do financially.
Well, just, just building a sheriff's department and tearing down this one is gonna be very costly itself.
Well, I don't think we need to tear that down, es- especially now, I mean, we moved a lot of stuff into it, it's a great storage unit right now. If nobody else is parking up there, we can make it parking lot.
What is the issue with parking?
Just that. We got a lot of people, there's some days that, uh, when the courts are busy, it's, it's packed.
But we got a parking lot down the street.
Parking lots, yeah.
Two cars sitting there. I used it once.
You used the ones.
Had to.
I mean, the one, at the end, the other end of the block.
Since we're just having open discussion right now, I, I, how about we continue down this list? Like Department of Operations and Equipment, is there anything under that list that you guys feel it? Is it an absolute priority? Oh, I mean, I disagree with, I mean, I, I, we're just open discussion right now.
So on Department of Operations?
Yeah, we already covered the software, I mean, to some extent.
Well, I think. I think that the, the body scanner for the correctional facility, I think it's a great idea, but I think I'd not mind a commissary, I'd be able to buy it. That would use the commissary funds.
Oh, job description project.
Yeah, I was asked, wondering that too.
It was the finished.
Cross that off. I don't think now it marries here, I don't think that that's necessary, do you? Okay, can we, so can, are you okay? I was totally kidding, but can we cross that off?
Yeah, we're crossing.
Job description.
Mine. Yeah, I don't mind cutting that off.
So recycling, we already crossed off the sting, we're gonna look at the, the settlement money for that, cause I, I am in favor of that one as well.
Eight hundred mega hertz radios, fire departments do have eight hundred mega hertz radios, mostly handhelds.
Okay.
Uh, some of their trucks do have truck radios. Not everybody has them, I don't believe every department, at least a few years ago, every department was actually using them. I had heard some that refused to use them and they were sitting on shelves, so they preferred not to use the eight hundreds. I know the eight hundred radios, no, I am not kidding you, absolutely, absolutely, and.
They're in the dark ages though.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, they work really good, I had my eight hundred when I was on the fire department, I was literally in Sarnia, Canada and could talk to the department. In Rose City.
I've talked.
Radios work very well.
Like you and I sitting across the table.
Yeah, yeah, so, um.
So what was this for exactly, remind me, I guess.
Handheld radios for the fire departments.
For which fire departments?
For, for all, for all the fire departments, for, you know, EMS, EMS has one, I think all they've got down at EMS. I believe it's a handheld. Um, in the office.
You wanna leave it on the list then?
I don't think we need to.
Okay, that was quick.
Yeah, well, it was your suggestion, just like my job. At the time.
Okay, so we got job description project taken off as well, vehicle GPS.
I don't think that that's gonna be a whole lot of money to do that. I think that could be inside the, the budget and part of it, um, it's village.
I think that's a priority though, I think we continue to.
I think it's important, not just, um, for county vehicles, but for, uh. I think that the other, other entities in the county would be interested in being on that network, um, as a total county.
Well, I think it would be a safeguard, um, I think the sheriff.
Absolutely.
For, for transport, to transport prisoners to, to the prisons and to have some GPS. On that vehicle to know where it's at. Good safety.
Just as Tim said, transit has money. It could cover their units. Building Department has a building fund, that could cover that, you know, those units, so there, there is probably outside funding. Outside of ARPA, it can handle a majority of that.
And it does benefits as well, and Kevin had said something about that, I don't know what their number would be, but. Definitely would be a good thing for us to have it, just for our insurance company.
Who's, who's moving forward with that?
We just need to, um, pick a, pick a system, so we need to get together, um, I think someone's gonna get us a, a meeting together at some point.
It's funny, if you have interested, get an RPO.
Somebody to your left?
So are we leaving that out of the list, are we taking that out of the list?
I think it's important, what do you think?
Oh, I think it's important, I don't know how much of ARPA, since we're talking ARPA, I don't know how much of ARPA would, would go toward it. Because we have identified some different other funding sources. Even on this list, I don't have a problem, it just, maybe just a small percentage of the total cost would be in ARPA.
I'm making it a pink.
The number, the number of units that we would need, the sheriff's office. Transit. Building and zoning. Equalization, you know, whomever, and then say, okay. Thirty percent of the total cost goes to the sheriff, ten percent goes to X, Y, Z.
Thirty percent goes transit.
Yeah, depending. And that's what's gonna be.
People would get involved in it.
Hopefully, the economy of scale. The bigger the system, the less expensive it's gonna be per unit.
You could even add the road commission.
If they wanted to be outside and they can pay for it, their share, but yeah, absolutely.
So.
So I, I think.
A share of operation.
I think we should leave it on, but again, it's still an unknown cost.
We just gotta, we just gotta get some quotes out, get together, see who's all interested in it.
Leaving that one on home improvement program, two hundred thousand?
Yep, this is, uh, the low income, uh, home renovation projects that they do out of our. Housing office, and this would supplement their revolving loan program, they would get more money into the community, more impact on the. The low income homeowner, help bring some of the home code or do furnace repairs or whatever it might be.
What? Where are they at funding wise now?
They receive funding annually, uh, through, um, CDBG programs primarily. They have some other sources that they use for things like wells, uh, but those monies have been relatively dependable. I mean, each county is usually allocated a certain amount to put into their programs. Uh, but as I know Leanne will tell you, there is way more need out there than what they have money for, so what their thought was. Uh, and I think she did a good job articulating that in the handout she provided, uh, with just to supplement that program. Get more money into it, get more projects done. Repair more homes.
This, this goes right along with your daycare, because your EDC has, has identified housing. A big priority.
I don't disagree with that, but that's not, this is home improvement program, that's not expanding on. Housing, so I'm gonna disagree, I, I hear what you say, but I'm gonna disagree with the aspect of childcare as a reason people are not moving here. Housing is a second one.
Some of this housing improvement is for rentals too. A lot of this money is going into rental, to, to improve rental buildings.
Yeah, I think that there's a lot of funding out there for that as well.
Well, there is, and Leanne has been very successful at getting more grant money.
Agreed.
And, and I think she, she was just asked. Is there anything that the county could help with, with via ARPA money and she's put in a number?
Agreed.
You know, that's.
Like we asked.
Yeah.
So what's your guys' thoughts on that too, I'm sorry.
Besides you, this is a revolving loan fund, so two hundred thousand gets put into it, it gets put out into the community. Those homes that are repaired, they actually make payments back to the program monthly at a low interest rate. Uh, and so the funds, you know, continue to revolve, like it said, they come back in, they can then put them back out to another.
Proves the tax base also on top of it.
So your thoughts, Commissioner Scott?
I, you know, it's one of these, it's probably number three priority, something that when we have done. If we ever get done and then we got money left over, we take a look at it again, it's a, it's a look again program, you know? I think a lot of these things we're, we're gonna be. Looking at if we, if we have. Four hundred thousand left over out of all the projects, wanna figure out that we're gonna do, if we got some money left over or something like that. We'll pull back down the, a list and, and this could be on it.
Commissioner Serebik?
I agree.
With.
Scott, so just, you know, it's definitely, you know, needs to, we looked at if we've got funding.
Commissioner Vaughn?
I'm kinda feeling the same way.
But keep it on the list for now, okay, sheriff's office security cameras.
Sheriff, is that project happening now? And if it is, we can take it off.
With, uh, the cameras inside, yeah, but I understand is that we have them, we just gotta get a moment. So maybe.
Interbeing in that, though, some, somehow that got put on the list, that was supposed to be the county building security cameras.
This is county building office security cameras.
Did we ever get a quote on that yet, Tom?
No, that's something Mike Bowers was working on, um, we've been discussing that back and forth when some more funding comes down. I don't know if it's really ARPA funds, um, but Mike was working on some additional funding.
His funding got actually cut this year compared to what it was.
Hey, Tom, would those just be recording cameras or would there be somebody actively staring at screens, looking at them?
It could be both ways, we could put a monitor downstairs by like the security station.
We did talk about both ways.
I think I, I did mention, uh, one company for you to look at. They're, they're pretty good, so I think it's important to have their security in and around them.
There's cameras in the ceiling now, right?
They're terrible, terrible, you can't even recognize them, they stand right in front of them.
Yes.
Yeah, they are.
Oh no, I think there's some in the hallways above the ceilings that, that don't work, I mean, right, something like that.
There's one by each entrance and exit, but they face in and down, it doesn't really catch a whole lot, they are.
Who sees that?
Pretty much.
Well, I don't even think they're turned on, are they?
They are.
They are turned on, are they?
They are, they are.
Are they analog?
They are.
Okay, so we'll keep that on the list for now.
Try to see somebody, you, you gotta go digital.
Okay, guys, we got equalization GIS upgrade.
What would it do?
What would it do?
Yeah.
It's, it's a functional tool that most every county has, utility companies use it, building and zoning use it, the township. The assessors can use it, you can tie all the GIS parcel data information in with the assessing data. You can review parcels, see if there's buildings on them that maybe aren't on the assessment roll. Kinda like that GeoSpan did, but not in such a detailed flyover, but you can review the whole thing when it's all tied together. Uh, but all the state.
Layered then? There are layers often.
Yeah, you can, I, I had a Zoom meeting yesterday with, uh, Amalgam. And you're assuming like Iasko County has six layers, Saginaw County has about twenty-five layers. You can put all the utilities in there and there's just a multitude of layers you can use. And like I say, different agencies use it, right now the state is doing a flyover of every county every five years. So we're getting great digital imagery at twelve inch that we can't use, cause we can't put it in there really, you know? But, uh, they're flying over this morning. But for that, they also need our GIS information, M dot uses it to reevaluate. When, uh, I just sent a land division request for West Branch Township. And it's split and whether they put a driveway in there, instead of M dot having somebody come down from Alpeno, last time I talked to Rick Ferguson. He was, uh, on his laptop on a construction project somewhere else in the state, pulled up the aerial photography and. If the GIS is all tied together, it makes it easier for them when they're looking and reviewing those types of, the projects. Uh, even when they're doing their construction, they use our GIS, the, the, uh, district, Brave River area. They can't use our personal information to do that, that's why they have such a box for public hearing. Uh, none of our subdivision lots are in that, so they pulled up the meets and bounds parcels. But over half the parcels weren't noticed for the first year, because they didn't have a way, even though I gave them the data. They weren't able to utilize it. Could correlate, that, or they don't talk back and forth and, uh. You know, as of December thirty-first of last year, assessment data is supposed to be, every municipality that has high-speed internet. It's supposed to be online, available to the public, all the information is supposed to be there, we're not compliant with that.
Non-compliant, yeah.
But it's, there's just a lot of uses with G I M. And our county's system is archaic compared to just about anyone else in the state. Uh, Jesse's had to get a special grant for nine-one-one because we don't have address points. Well, when I spoke with Amalgam yesterday, one of the things that they are gonna integrate in is they can put the address points as, uh, basically like a CAD system. But it'll be integrated as part of GIS, so that every time we update a new parcel, Brian gets out a building for investors a new house. The address will be in the system, so it's already.
So those systems talk to each other.
Exactly, instead of her having her separate CAD system that's got address points. They'll just have feed right into our GIS and it could be linked together so that when the sheriff's department gets a call, they can have a map to know exactly.
So not only is it gonna benefit the public, but also to public safety.
Yep.
A positive for public safety, it's not a, a niche for equalization, but it's gonna serve.
In, in our county that have a night, enhance nine-one-one GIS, so when you get an ambulance call, when they go up to the ambulance, they've got a laptop. They've got a map on how to get to the property, which some of these areas, we got people working ambulance service don't live here. And don't know Foster Township or Way Out, good or Township, but how to find it. And GIS isn't always reliable, a lot of the places, like they get from Google Maps or whatever.
Right.
And so there, there's a lot of those type of benefits to having an up-to-date GIS system, not just for what we do in the land bodies.
So you don't have this in your budget at all?
I, in, the fees have come down in the hosting fees, I'm working with Amalgam on that right. I've been trying to get this for a couple meetings to present it to you, but the, I'm, I am supposed to have some fees. I've been trying to get this for a couple of meetings to present it to you, but the, I'm, I am supposed to have some fees coming up. But the increased fees that we do with the townships in, in the cities of this year, we're going to be receiving a 25 cent per parcel. Because one of the problems when they did GIS in 1999, they never included any money to update. Well, that fee is going to raise about $6,500 a year to help post the GIS and help keep it updated. And so there's going to be a mechanism in place like that so that we don't get it all updated this year. And we're looking, doing the same thing 10 years from now that we don't have any money in place. We have to update it. And so moving forward, I think we'll be able to have, you know, a budget figure in place that we can update it. Be a substantial cost.
We set, we set a fee for a municipal township, say, do they have to pay us?
They pay us in equalization since 1994. They were paying us about a dollar 40 a parcel to process deeds, do the homestead forms, to, to print the tax bills and we're not responsible for any of those functions, statutory. Uh, but a lot of the small towns don't necessarily have the capability. So we've always done it. Equalization has always done it. But since 1994, when homesteads came out, equalization department has been charging the township cities to do that. About 70,000 a year of our revenue for our, for our department comes from the townships, cities.
Will we charge them for GIS also?
Three years ago, I sent them a letter and talked about increasing our fees that we charged them. And we went from a dollar 40 to I think a dollar 65 last year. This year, when I sent out the notices this summer, the fee that's in the letter is $2 per parcel. 25 cents of that was dedicated for GIS to upgrade and start getting some funding to help with the GIS. Uh, just the website hosting alone for the GIS is, I think it's going to be roughly 4,500 a year. Uh, but to be honest, when I started this three years ago, we were looking to buy a $25,000 to set up a server and have a standalone GIS. Well, now it's all a cloud based system. So instead of having to put all that kind of money into it, plus have the staff to, to monitor it all the time, we could put the GIS out on the cloud. And it's, it's $4,500 a year versus having another server and all the other information. So the cost has come down substantially.
Commissioner Sorek?
Oh, I think it's send my number two green though, because Tim changed our plan of color coding.
Okay. So you already, so keep it on the list. You, you rated it. Commissioner Vaughn?
Um, well, like you said, it, it's going to benefit the whole county. Um, it's kind of a, I don't want to say it, uh, a shot in the arm to get it started, but you're going to have the money to maintain it. That's the plan. I mean, it may be some within the general fund, within the county budget as well, but the, with what I'm saying, the townships, they're all going to help benefit to do it too. And they know, they all have a benefit in it as well.
Okay. Commissioner Sorek?
Yep, number two.
Land Bank?
See Karen is on the call. Uh, this is really to help the land bank say acquire properties, but improve properties that they do get. So when the land bank gets a property, it's usually a, like a foreclosed property. It needs some attention to make it marketable and sell it to get it back on the tax roll. By umbrella knowledge of land bank is not as great as Karen's that she, she's unmuted. So maybe Karen, you can talk a little bit about that.
Good morning, everyone. Yeah. So as you know, as the new treasurer, I relaunched the Ogama County Land Bank Authority. Um, Tim helped me assign new board members. And yes, the land bank has submitted a request for a hundred thousand dollars to help revitalize properties um, in neighborhoods in our community. We only have a balance of $20,000 at this time. Um, and as you know, the cost of demolition and removal of light is expensive. We're just looking for some seed money to help launch our programs and, and create a better community for everyone.
Thank you. Thoughts, Commissioner Vaughn?
Again, so you know, it's going to help the whole community. It's a, a very worthwhile endeavor. So I would, I would say at least a two.
Commissioner Sorek?
I would say between two and a three.
Commissioner Sorek?
I had it along with the home improvement. See, I'm making my list as we go along.
So you got them.
I don't know about anybody else, but.
I've got my stickies right here.
Okay.
You're on the low side.
Commissioner, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I am too. I'm on the low side, the green side there.
I'm not discounting it, but I'm putting it at a three.
I'm more comfortable with that number being, they got 20,000 in there, you know, maybe not quite 100,000. Definitely. I agree with contributing. Whether it's 50, whether it's 25, I think at least 25, but um, I, I, I especially.
See what we got in there?
Especially in my townships. Um, this would significantly benefit. So, okay. So that we'll keep that one on there. Thank you.
You're welcome, Karen.
Uh, airport transit fiber. I crossed that one out. Correct?
I, I think we pursue that with transit dollars.
Hey.
And or the broadband.
So.
Right, yeah.
Funding combination thereof.
Um, the Dale Carnegie train. I don't think we, we talked any, that was one of your ideas as well, Commissioner Scott.
And, and that number, it's, it's actually just a, just a little over 25,000. I just rounded it down, but we got that firmed up yesterday, actually.
For how many people?
Fifteen.
For 15?
Yeah, I'm not okay with that, but I, I.
It's a good course. Man, that's a lot of money for.
That's a lot of money.
No.
There's a lot of other trainings out there that are fair enough, but not nearly that, that much.
For person. Yeah. I, I think they need to start with that book that we recommended.
Twenty-five, that's for all 15, all 15 participants.
I understand. Yeah, that's a lot of money for a person. Still $25,000 we could give to the land bank and actually get some.
Well, if you had, if you had people outside of our county though, we could charge those entities, say the city one to send somebody. This yard, they could pay their share.
And so.
All 15 people came, most would, you know.
We took that off, correct? Commissioner Sorek?
As much as I'd love to see it, but man, that's a lot of money.
Okay. Digital camera jails, 160,000.
Tom can address this in greater detail, but this is in effect to replace equipment that we have upgraded to higher technology.
Tom?
Basically what Tim said, there's analog cameras at the jail right now for all the cells and everything, but um, we did source a quote from the vendor to upgrade those to digital. Some of it's already been done, but it was done quite a few years ago, like replacing part of the recorder, recording process. It's been upgraded to digital, but it probably be further had to be replaced because it's already probably five years old.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think this is something that probably, that should be done sooner than later, but um, again, there's probably some other sources of funding out there too, within the jail.
Well, you just heard our honor tell us that the commissary fund took a hundred 10,000 dollar hike in the last fiscal year. Sure have not been getting hit with requests from that fund like we were the last administration. They were coming in here about every month, wanting to take money out of it, spend something.
I think we headed that off of like 200,000 as part of the budget.
Yeah.
Get over.
Right. That helped, but I, we're just not hearing that. So there's still quite a bit there.
It's not a challenge, Sheriff. We don't.
No, it's not a challenge at all. It's something to take a look at. There's dollars freed up there. There's something to look at prioritizing what should be spent on there.
Well, I mean, between commissary and some of these other funds.
Yeah.
But they, they also have a not to jump ahead, but they've also got some vehicles on here.
Right.
Corrections too.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. So we're leaving that on. We taking it off?
To continue to look at it. And uh, did, did we get just one quote, Tom? Or are we, are we looking at multiple uh, vendors?
We got one quote because it's pretty much integrated with the door control system. The whole entire security cameras system over there is integrated with the doors and everything. So we went with that software or with that vendor.
Probably a sole source.
What's, what's the software and the equipment type?
As far as?
A brand?
I'm not going to say it on Zoom.
Okay. I'll get with you later.
Okay, anything, Commissioner Vaughn?
Again, I, I've worked over there. So I know how the cameras work and whatnot. Um, I'm sure they need their, their upgrades. So I would again, say uh, two to three, depending on, you know, how we can get some funding. I don't know as far as commissary. Again, we're going to, you know, we're going to need transport vehicles, um, the other there, the, the body scanner stuff. So we'd have to look at funds and see what's there.
And I'll leave it on.
Yeah, the cameras there, there, there's a couple of spots.
They're blind.
Clerk file cabinets. We're keeping that on.
So we're digital cameras keeping that on? Keeping it on, right?
These, these three wanted it on. Yes. The digital.
The clerk filing cabinet?
No, I'm, the digital cameras jail replaced. We're. No, I didn't. I was moving on. He went backwards.
You said it all well.
I said that stays on. Now we're going on to the clerk file cabinets.
That was just one of those capital improvement, um, in the next five to 10 years, what we would have in our office. It's just the luxury versus the big, um, filing system.
This isn't your four door deal, this is.
This is the big one that gives us issues every now and then and, um.
So I'll, I'll take the CPL one to replenish and tell the other one.
That's not for CPLs. That's for court.
Well, why don't you put some CPL stuff in there?
Because we are set with our CPL security.
You just won't change.
I am all about change. I just know.
Change for the better. All about change for the better.
You can't reserve one shelf for CPR.
You cannot reserve one shelf for CPR. No. So that was what that was. Um, we have three of them in the building. If one were, I don't know, if, if one were to go down, like say the one in my office that we use, we would need to do something.
We'll cut your salary and then buy, buy, take care of it.
No.
Okay.
I think it's something that's going to have to be done at some point in time.
It is, but um, I'm, I'm, I really hate to say this, but honestly, listening to some of these other things.
Cross it off? I just made my day here.
You could live without it.
Yeah, I mean, there's other options and honestly, like the, the GIS and the GPS and.
I think this exercise, we catch it.
Yeah.
Thanks. On to the next. We got vehicles. Thank you for that. Equalization planning and zoning vehicle, $30,000. Wants to.
No, okay.
Randy Scott.
Two different. Two different departments. Actually, this would end up being, I couldn't say quotes, a fleet vehicle. Yeah, they would, they would share it, but if it were a fleet vehicle, any other department that was maybe somebody was going to a conference and equalization and planning and zoning didn't need it that day, it would be available into the employee.
Right.
So more or less a fleet vehicle wouldn't be just those departments.
How bad is this needed?
Well, they don't, the one they had, like Randy said, the battery is probably worth more than the vehicle.
Okay. Randy, here's your time to sell your vehicle.
Sell your vehicle. We need some type of reliable transportation to do, to field work that we have to do to do our studies. We don't put a lot of miles on a vehicle. We only put about 3,000, 3,500 miles a year. And so when I approached him, I said, I know planning and zoning Ryan's using his own vehicle all the time. I said, for our needs, really it could be a vehicle assured between a couple of departments to use for whatever they need because, you know, I can't come to you and say, we need a brand new vehicle just for equalization department because it's going to sit there most of the time. We don't use it during the winter at all, but uh, I, I've been here five years almost and we've had three different old cop cars that were, went to the scrapyard. I read.
War on when you get them.
Yeah, yeah. The last one was war on. You guys put, and I don't know the cost, but how is, they, they'd already put two transmissions in it. You guys put a new transmission in, of course, we didn't get a thousand miles in it and it was junk. But it was a used transmission from a junkyard. And so it just, it, it, you know, we, and unfortunately the transmission waited until it wouldn't start. One day we had to have it jumped and we had to have it towed, had a new battery put in it. And then the next week, the transmission went out. I mean, this I came to was in first gear. I think we were just in Edwards Township and I don't know. Gooder, but we made it home in, in first gear and low and the transmission coming down 30 to get back to the courthouse. And so I, you know, with the sheriff's department is done with the vehicle, there's some crap there.
We uh, you know, to, to tell, to tell this whole story about that car though, we sold other cars to pay for that.
Yeah.
Repair. That did not come out of the general fund. So I'd like to make that clear because I don't want people running around saying that we're spending general fund money.
Well, it's, and I, you guys fixed it up for us. I mean, I appreciate that effort and, and whatnot, but it just, whatever was going on with the vehicle, the, the fact that it had three transmissions in a year and a half, there's something else causing that problem. I mean.
Well, I think there was a loose nut behind the wheel myself.
No, between.
I think you're talking about the previous.
No, not the driver at all. It's a nut, not involved.
Between the equalization that you say you don't drive it that much, um, and the building department vehicles, is there a way we could share those vehicles?
I think that's what we're saying. Right?
And even going beyond that, if, if needed for anybody to drive outside the county for something, if that isn't being used, it could be.
Conference.
I think that's just.
Meeting.
I think that's extremely important.
I just don't think, there's no other money that are available to take care of that.
I made that a pink. So we're keeping that on there.
That on your calendar.
Uh, we are looking at, I crossed off the building department's vehicle because we made them. Okay. Uh, so we have patrol vehicles, vehicle one and vehicle two for the sheriff's department.
And these again came right off of the capital improvements list, and this was the sheriff's department effort to get that rotation going. And I think we have, we got a couple of vehicles in the mix now. Um, so long route way of saying that I think we actually have those covered already in our program. So it'd be nice to accelerate it, but not necessary.
Take those off?
Yep.
Okay. Animal control vehicle.
Yep.
Yeah, but.
Think we're going to have to do something there.
I agree.
We don't have extra money for it. Uh, we did ask for it at USDA, right?
Yeah, it's one of the vehicles.
Did it ask for it? Is it?
Yeah, it is on a.
Remember that's a class here. We wouldn't be paying all of it. They'd be paying for like half, but.
So when do we know? Are we seeing that?
We're at their mercy, right?
Did you apply that?
Should we know?
I was told that USDA had a change in supervisor position. Uh, the girl was just getting her stuff up and running. Uh, being told hopefully by next month. Well, she's hoping to have more information. Obviously that's still there, but she's hoping to have some more information for us at least by next month. When we're at, before transfer.
How much are they looking at funding for that, for a control vehicle, an animal control vehicle?
55%.
Okay.
And that's the same with all of us.
Okay. So we're keeping that on there?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, corrections, transport fleet.
Again, with like the, the digital cameras, I think some of those could be coming out of commissary, but where are we, where are we sitting right now as far as?
The van, the van's got a few miles on it. We're running it all the time. So I mean, if we could have like an SUV, make these short runs, keep the miles off the big, the big van, that's very expensive. Having a transport vehicle. Doesn't have a four cylinder and doesn't have to have, doesn't have to have all the lights and everything on it either. So I think it'd be rather important to have that just to keep the miles off, off of our vans.
I mean, if you're running, if you're running.
I mean, if you're running, if you're running a transport, say, to the prison. It's two officers and an inmate, so instead of running the big van, like you're saying. It's gotta be gas.
And then, yeah, that is one of the.
Now he has a four cylinder in it or something.
Transport vehicle. The equipment that we put on it would be very minimal. He's in there. Radio, shotgun.
So it wouldn't be the two seventeen six oh six. You're asking for a smaller vehicle, correct?
An export with a four cylinder.
Fifty thousand.
No, is this in addition to the regular rotation of another van? Or this?
When when this was. This came up the C I P and I believe Brian just said we need to replace all the vans eventually, you know, in the ten year period.
Right, because because we allocate so much in the budget every year toward another vehicle. My question is, is it an additional vehicle or is this the regular vehicle?
Yeah.
Because it's a regular vehicle, we're already budgeted for it.
The one van had over three hundred thousand miles on it, I think is what you're. This isn't a regular but budget item. We would never have a van with that many miles on it.
But I'm pretty sure the last van was bought with commissary.
It, no doubt, probably once, yeah.
You still got three of them?
Well, the last time I knew, we had three and one of them had three hundred thousand. Our newest van has a hundred thirty thousand on it right now.
Three hundred thousand isn't a surprising number anymore. I mean, it's a lot. It's a lot. Don't get me wrong. But, you know, I mean, a car nowadays, when when people say, well, I I just bought another car, a hundred thousand miles. Oh, you're just a break in. You know, now when we were kids, you were the hero on the block to get a hundred thousand, you know?
Junk at sixty.
Yeah, but, you know. I get that, but, you know, we do, we do have a regular budget, too. This is, this is a big win. Winfall of money here. I don't want.
Keeping it on?
I I'd keep it on.
Okay.
We need to take a look at all. All the necessary fundings.
Agreed.
I I say keep it on, but between the two and three right now.
Hey, Commissioner Van, do you agree?
Yep.
Okay, I think Commissioner Serebik already spoke. Uh, onto non-county government request. Uh, broadband enhancements. Are we holding on that for now?
I think if we do that, that we pursue the broadband money to do it.
Okay, so. Goodr Township Fire Department, thirty thousand dollars. Ron, was that your idea?
Yeah, I I had brought that up after talking to Goodr. Maybe had some changes out there as far as a new chief and in some different things. I I do know that some of their vehicles. They basically drain, winterize, whatever, are not in operation. I I think they're. Maybe they're grass rigs or whatever. They are sitting outside. They're sitting out in the snow. I know that for a fact. I go up there to the township meetings and it's in the right next to the fire hall. So it it it's something that I think is very well needed. Again, we could go back. If there is leftover money, just go back and say, and something that maybe we can split or.
They have a mileage for. To fund them, correct? What township are they in?
Goodr.
Goodr.
Yeah, a mill, a mill up there probably represents twenty-five thousand dollars.
They're operating.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that I don't, I don't think they have a fire mileage up there.
They don't?
No, and and to be honest, their equipment's not the the top of the line or the best, best of the best. But. I know they could surely use the building for, you know, just, I'm just talking, just a a pole building. You know, I don't know whether they could attach it to the fire hall or there's.
They gotta ask.
No.
So this is just thirty thousand.
That was just a rough ballpark. I think I had actually asked my son, the builder, what, give me a ballpark. That's what he come up. I don't even know if that's.
And how long ago did you give it to you?
Oh, yeah, that was.
Because I I talked to my guy, been working on my house. I talked to him about a pole barn. He goes, don't even think about a pole barn, no. He says, you can't believe, don't even think about it.
At the price, I I would, I wouldn't know, and I don't, I don't even know if that's cement or.
Yeah, and he told, he, whatever he told me was. Or what a pole barn or, and I don't remember the size, but. It's doubles as last.
Thoughts on this, guys? Keeping it on, taking it off?
I I say keep it on, but it's. Number three.
All right, this, this, the the whole thing for non-county, non-county government. As far as I'm concerned, we need to nail down all the rest of the paperwork before we even take a look at anyone.
Agreed, but they also spent time to bring this.
I get it. I get it. I I get it, but. When when we take a look at how much we've already committed out, what's left?
The the rest of it that we got out here, I'd say is probably a meeting for a later date.
Well, I I I think we still have twenty minutes to go.
I mean, we can go back on the list and go back down.
I want to touch base on them. Again, they took the time to submit them to us. Some of us, some of them have been here. Mary's sitting right here, um, the library. I know they're waiting for an answer from us. I believe some of you have said.
Yeah, sure they are. You know, they want to fix that this year. Now, I think that that elevator prices. I know you're not that far, but.
No, we're not. Okay, so let's, we're, Goodr, we put on the Ogama County Fair, the lost revenue is thirty-four thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars. Mary, do you want to speak?
We lost it. We need it desperately.
They do. I've been to the fair board meetings. They do. They're trying to cut corners as many ways that they possibly can to to try to make a goal of it this year.
We have cut corners everywhere. Come on Saturday morning and watch us search bottles of beer.
Well, I think everybody lost, lost funding last year because of COVID. Everything was shut down and whatnot. But. I don't know. I I've been out to the fair. I I pay to get in. You pay for the carnival. You pay for the camping. You pay. There's, there's revenue there.
The problem is, is is that they have to pay for for like what they're trying to do come this this fair. They have to pay and plan for that now. They lost all of that for the year that they didn't have a fair. You know, they did, they did still supply this for the kids, thank goodness. Along with all the rentals, they had to return a bunch of money. Some of them moved on to next year. Now some of them aren't getting married or or whatever. I mean, plus. You guys, you guys had a the worst of the worst scenario. And again, these people want their money before you plan the event or before you retain them or while you. So you're trying to plan a year ahead without the funding.
Virtually every contract we had, you know, was just ninety-nine percent of it was in this year, so. The revenue that we expected that we even lost was gone.
Correct. Commissioner Serebik?
I have a number three. We have funding left over. Most definitely consider.
Commissioner Scott?
Um, I'm at this, at the same point. Absolutely. I gotta, gotta take a look at. I've been on the same standpoint right from the get-go. Welcome anybody that asks, but I want to take care of the county stuff first.
Okay, we're gonna keep this on. You guys know my feelings on it, but I have pretty strong feelings on this, so, um, again, I I I don't think, and then I'll move on. Um, I just, you you can't go any any other place in our affairs, the number one, I believe, in the state of Michigan and. People put a lot of work, a lot of time. I go to those fair board meetings and it's it's unbelievable and it's all voluntarily. Um, and I think you guys have made twenty grand on bottles, twenty-something?
No, we're up around forty thousand.
Okay, so literally sorting bottles and doing that on a fairly frequent basis.
Every Saturday morning.
Anybody's interested? Okay, so we got Ogama District Library lost revenue fifty-four thousand dollars. Anybody have a skill on that? Who who goes to the meetings where? Tim, do you know anything about this?
We got a letter. They asked for fifty-four thousand.
Okay.
That's about it.
And I I know that from goes to township, Clackey Township soon, that library district. And they've lost a significant amount of money because of the penal fines. And I think that's the same case with the West Branch District Library. That's where the most of their loss revenue was, is penal fines. You know, let's face it, we all know, not only was it COVID, but. When those cars set on I seventy-five rate, those traffic tickets up to kazoo, that was giving the libraries a whole lot of money. So they got hit with a double whammy. So I feel sorry for them, yes. My opinion.
Who we asked for? West Branch District Library Elevator. Have they reached out to anybody, any of the other townships or cities?
They were at the city meeting, I know. But I had did that. I have not seen them at the West Branch Township meeting, and I don't know about. Because Ogama Township, Foster and.
Horton.
Horton or. Is Edwards in it, too?
I think Edwards is in it.
I believe so.
I hear it mostly from Horton, because Karen Michael sits on the library board. And so does, uh. One from Foster. No. No.
So we keeping that on? We taking that off?
Um, I. Think that's, uh. I don't know what the number is, but it seems like they're spending an awful lot of money on vehicle fees right now that they could probably be putting towards this.
Yeah, I think somebody brought that up. Was that with the D D A?
I hate to sound anti-librarian, but I'm down on this one, too, personally.
Hey.
I'm not anti-librarian, but quite the opposite, but I.
So we're taking that one off? Somebody speak.
I say off.
Scott, Commissioner Scott.
Like I say, I'm at that same point. It's it's low to load off on every non-county.
You're keeping it on or off? You taking it off?
I'll leave it on if there's something left over.
Mr. Van?
No, leave it on is it.
Commissioner Newbecker. I took it off, too. So we got three offs and two on. Ogama County E M S ambulance.
They don't need it. I mean, they do, but they don't. So for this exercise, again, take off.
Anybody want to leave it on?
You should don't.
Okay, Northern Michigan.
They've got. They got, they got a fun balance.
Northern Michigan Children's Assessment Center.
I know. It's pretty, pretty decent fund balance. I don't ask. Yeah, no.
Northern Michigan Children's Assessment Center for five thousand?
I say keep it on.
I agree. That lady came. It's not a lot of money. I read her, uh, information she provided. Service is pretty important. Commissioner Scott?
Just in that same thing, like I say, everything up below that line, I'm just saying, I'll leave it there if there's some money there. Just, just, just.
Leave it on, leave it on, leave it on.
Just to give you an idea, I mean, I, I'm just taking a hundred and fifty thousand for the annex building. Half of I T, half of department operations, half of vehicles added up. I'm looking at nine hundred thousand dollars. Okay, that's just a portion of everything.
I I hear ya.
And that's only one item in the top row of their facility repair. I'm just going with the annex because we need to fix it.
I I I hear you and I agree.
To take a look at anything else, county of building efficiency, uh, energy efficiency improvements, we sure need it. Here, we got a building that's built fifty years ago. With fifty years old technology for winterization. I mean, we're eating up, I can hear the furnace running out, you know, it's just. We don't have a lot of money when you take a look at all these projects.
Agreed, but these these people also, I'm just gonna say this.
I understand, I understand.
Spent the time sending this to us, so I think.
And I went out there when they asked me and I said. What a, what a request that.
Okay, so that's.
Well, it's better than me saying absolutely not.
Northern Michigan Assessment Center, we're gonna leave on for five thousand. Will will, all the fair stuff's there still, but at last we have the commission on aging generator. Hundred and ten thousand, two fifty. You want to give us an update on that?
That just came in today. I think probably, maybe speaking of school here, but I. I believe that first management's gonna be able to come up with some funding for it. I say leave it on, but put it in a certain priority. Commission on Agents probably gonna be able to share it as well. So, and I think, again, because it's potentially designated shelter within Ogama County. It'd be a good use of, so funny, if we, if we've got someone available.
There was somebody there at the five-thirty meeting with the E D C. Oh, shoot. Is that Horton Township? Who's a. She was talking with the Horton Township Hall, being an emergency facility as well and and partnering with Mills. Because Mills' previous shelter was the, uh. Mister, Mrs. Race owned it. Um, I can't think of the name of the building. I'm glad I'm not the only one that's like, huh? Yeah. Three County Club. Thank you. That was it. Anyways, they sold it, so they don't own that anymore, so. Dave Ryan was at that meeting, um, and he said that now they have for backup. They have, uh, the, uh, one of my sponsors. That building. Chamber of Commerce, yes. And that is a. Lives there somewhere anyways. Um. They said they have that as a backup building and then that was up for discussion when they were talking about a generator, because, um. That's a large area and definitely need to make sure as well that that has a, uh, emergency shelter.
The thing about the commission on aging buildings is the fact that, number one. Not only is it a big building, doesn't use a shelter, so has full kitchen facilities.
Right.
Freezers. I mean, so not only could they shelter people in there, but they can feed them as well.
So did the Three County Club.
You know, so, but I mean, does the Three County Club have food sitting there on hand?
I know, but that's, that's a ways to travel for for Mills Township. Um, you know, it's not saying that they couldn't get there. It's a great kind of a central location for the county.
Commission on Aging is just.
We get busing there, you know. We can get them there.
Well, it's on a major highway.
Yeah, wherever they're transferring.
On two major highways.
That was part of the discussion at that meeting.
The thing is, is, the thing is, if you're gonna use something like that, it's probably because of a storm.
Their hall, their hall is.
That's, that's what normally in in our county.
Right.
And in that, in that case, you'd probably want to evacuate people from the storm area, the storm damage area. To another facility.
I disagree, but it is nice of the large area like that, at least has.
County, as far as countywide, we should have. Emergency manager probably would, should have about five or six different designated.
Well, I know K S E Hall here in West Branch. Used to be, I don't know if it's those I would suspect that it is.
We should ask Mike about all that. I don't know. We need one.
Yeah, we just, the the critical infrastructure field was just on. Um, that should all be on a list. Everything should be on a list. Because I did I Osko County and I did Osko County for them. I couldn't do Ogama living here. So, um, I know that he had somebody doing it, you know, with Senate. So there should be, uh, he should have had all that on hand.
We'll ask him for that. And then I think childcare needs to be on this list, too, so am I, are we? I'm adding, oh, my, I think.
All right.
Oh, did you? Okay, so now what, Tim?
Well, my thought was. We take what you've done on these lists right now. We just put them all. And this table here, we literally would take a picture of that so we can take it back and. Weighted accordingly, uh, so that you'll have a list now that's based on your priorities as a group, uh, individual. Brandon suggested, and this I will leave out there if you want to do it this way, uh, so that this be put in Excel. Spoiler alert, it is in Excel now. We just did it in PDF for iPad purposes. Send that to you. We could put three columns next to each one of these projects and you mark in the column which priority you want. I could even make it the colors in those columns. Yeah, and then just send that back to us. We'll. Um, I could even make it the colors in those columns. And then, uh, just send that back to us. We'll. Bring it all together and score it out for you, show you the results.
Made significant progress.
I think, absolutely. So if you'd rather do that, we can, we can send those sheets out, get it back to us as, set a deadline. Can you do it by today, Monday? And then I could send it back. We'll, we'll go from there. What I'll do now is, uh, the projects that have the. Top priority, of course, we can talk about this again on Thursday, but the ones that have the top priority, we'll start getting serious about getting the cost estimates. So that you have a real good idea of what kind of balance you're working with.
Put some kind of bottom of that, like, uh, place for notations, like. To say annex roof, if we have some other ideas that we can put in notation.
So what we'll do is, um, a spreadsheet, I'll have the project. The three columns, so you mark your X where you want to score it, and then we'll have another line written next to it. You can just type whatever you want on there. I feel bad for those who have filled out.
There you go. My homework is done. Is that it, guys? Is there anything else on there? Next steps and others, whether we're there for, for his public comment? Are we, are we fixed that point?
Ben, sure.
Yes, sir.
What was the request that showed twenty thousand?
Child, for what?
The, the last one that he had.
I just had a childcare. I didn't put a, an amount on that. I just.
Didn't they have, wasn't there? Cause I was thinking, I was thinking twenty thousand for some reason.
Um, no, I didn't.
I thought somebody mentioned a dollar figure.
Put an amount. I can get more information from the EDC, because again, I, that was a huge, that was a number one point there with that MSU, uh. Uh, uh, meeting.
I wrote it on here, so I just, I didn't know. Dollar figure was associated with it.
We're gonna add that on that bullet point somewhere, right?
I'll put it.
I didn't put a dollar figure with it. I think that at least it's conversation.
Right.
Any other comments, commissioners? Before I open for public comment? Public comment in the room? Any? Sir, come on up.
I just wanted to show you folks that I received that five thousand dollars today. Grant money.
For what?
That's, uh. United States Deputy Sheriff, this is for the weapons and the vest.
Oh, good.
We're gonna have to have a resolution then to accept the grant.
Brian, if you can send me a copy of that letter.
Yeah.
And then I'll have what I need for the reservation.
Just received it.
Any other public comment? What comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Motion.
Can't both say it at the same time.
With support. Twelve fifty-three. I try that. All in favor, say yes.[1793.58]